Order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance required. The United States of America, in two thousand and eleven, which stands by nation under God, in the principle of enrichment and justice.
Uh, next up is a motion to approve the agenda.
I'd second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. So same sign, motion carried. Moving on to informational items. I think that's Kim, but it is Classified Appreciation Week.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Um, today we had the honor of going to all of the different buildings and the different departments. And this is Classified Appreciation Week. And I sent out an um email telling everybody what we're doing. In your desks or in front of your seats today, you all got a cookie. Those were what got, everybody got that and a bottle of water. And we were able to shake hands. Um, Kim Bolt, who has recently retired from HR, she went with us and she said she she volunteered her time, but she went with us because she got to say goodbye to everybody that she's helped through the years. So it's kind of fun. And I'm going to read this for the record. Classified staff, as we celebrate Classified Employee Week from March ten to March fourteenth of two thousand and twenty-five, I want to take a moment to extend my heartfelt appreciation to each and every one of our classified staff members. Your roles encompass a diverse range of essential services, including transportation, security, nursing, paraprofessional secretaries, business office, curriculum department, migrant services, technology, maintenance, and food service. Your dedication and hard work are truly the foundation of our school community, and it is important to recognize the significant impact you have on our collective success. Throughout this year, I've had the privilege of witnessing your unwavering commitment to excellence. From ensuring the cleanliness and safety of our school facilities to providing invaluable support to our teachers and students, your contributions do not go unnoticed. Whether it's preparing nutritious meals, maintaining orderly workspaces, providing safe transportation, offering security, attending to health needs, assisting students in classrooms, managing administrative tasks, supporting curriculum development, serving in our migrant community, keeping our technology infrastructure running smoothly, or maintaining our facilities, your efforts are essential and greatly appreciated. It is often said that a school is only as strong as its staff, and I wholeheartedly believe that to be true. Your dedication and passion for your work make our educational environment a vibrant and enriching place for all. Thank you for everything you do to make our schools a place where every student can thrive. I hope you take pride in the vital role you play in the success of our students and of our district. With deepest appreciation and warm regards, Kim Casey.
Great, thank you. Alright, next up is uh Board Comments. Do we have? Do we have some signed up? Alright, for addressing the board, you may present a concern to the board during the time reserved for hearing public comment. If this is the case, we ask that you, prior to the start of the meeting, sign in noting the topic you intend to address to the board. Come to the microphone up here and state your name. Do not reflect adversely on political or economic view, ethnic background, character, or motives of any individual. Do keep your comments concise, non-emotional, and brief. The board is interested in hearing your concerns and compliments, too. It is best to call the superintendent's office a couple of days before the meeting. If this isn't possible, you can ask the board president to recognize you during the hearing session. And we'll go for three minutes uh per person for a total of twenty minutes. Uh, first up is Jessica Hofer.
Hello. Thank you guys for having me. Uh, my name is Jessica Hofer. Uh, I am a mother of three, uh, student athletes. I'm speaking in support of the WIAA resolution today. Um, so my oldest daughter struggles with social anxiety, and soccer and track have helped her with confidence, stay healthy, and connect with peers. Sports are an incredible outlet, as all of you know, and every child should have the chance to play. However, fairness and safety in girls' sports are are being compromised in the name of inclusivity. Physiological differences between men and women are vast. Uh, males have greater muscle mass, lung capacity, larger wingspans, and numerous numerous other physical advantages. And that's why we have separate categories. Yet in Washington State, male athletes can just identify to compete against girls without taking hormone suppressants. All they need to do is declare they are a girl. Girls who speak up are dismissed, and their families stay silent out of fear of being called a transphobic person. But this is about fairness to safety, and that is why I'm here today. Recently, a tri-city soccer club that I know was forced to choose between paying a fine if they forfeited or competing against a male player. Their concerns did not matter. Only the inclusion of a trans identified athlete did. Last year Donovan Brown, who transitioned and now goes by Veronica Garcia, began competing in the GSL, which is a crossover with the CWAC, which is what the Prosser School District is in. My daughter called upset that a male athlete was competing against her Prosser teammates. Garcia went on to easily win and then went on to win state. I was there, and I watched as the mother of the girl who took second place cried because her daughter was denied that first place. I watched as she clutched the fence, the chain link fence bawling. I watched as the girls that lost, that were bumped down the podium, um, were just in, just discouraged. The ninth place girl didn't even get on the podium because that spot was taken away. They only have eight spots. Some say it only affects a handful of cases, but how many is too many, and my answer is one. The impact ripples through teams, through siblings, through friends, and all the girls who see their hard work erased, and they do work extremely hard. This year, my daughter, last week at track, ran twenty-one hundred meter sprints, and she came home and her legs were like jello. But no matter how hard she trained, she cannot get over that biological disadvantage. She's not a boy. And this year, she's been asked to run the four hundred meter race, which means she will compete against Garcia. How do we fix this broken system? There are some processes in place. Every student from seventh grade and above who does middle school or high school sports does need to compete or complete a uh physical. And for boys, that's that cough test where you turn your head and cough. So there are some ways that we can have it ensured that its sex specific needs are met and that we are identifying whether they should play in the boys or girls category. If we don't act now, girls' sports will no longer be what we know. They will be erased. Women's records and their efforts will continue to be erased, but I do want to be clear. I do not condone bullying, and I don't want anyone to bully anyone.
Your time's up.
Already over. Man, it's time to stop.
It's a quick three minutes.
Okay, but I do want to point out, please don't bully. I just want to protect fairness in girls' sports.
Thank you. Next up is Rachel Mercer.
Can you hear me? Is that good?
Maybe a little closer.
Is that good? No? I'm apologizing. I'm going to read verbatim so I don't go over time. My name is Rachel Mercer. I'm here tonight to encourage the board to vote no on Agenda Item Number Seven. While I'm concerned about the legal justification of these amendments, I prefer to talk about the humanitarian side of the issue. In the late nineties, I left Horse Heaven Hills to, for Olympia, to study at the Evergreen State College. One of my first challenges was a personal one. One of my roommates was gay. I didn't know very many openly gay people and none my own age. By the end of my first year, I had completely adapted a new way of thinking when it came to sexuality. This didn't happen because of liberal educators or dismantling the patriarchy lecture. It happened because I was surrounded by openly queer people. What I discovered was that someone's sexual identity was their identity. It wasn't for me to judge or have preconceived notions about. I cared about this identity because it was important to care about, especially during this time period. Being openly queer was risky in the nineties. I was proud of myself during those first few years at Evergreen. I had grown as a person, and I gained friends from various backgrounds, life experiences, and identity. It enriched me. But during my third year, one of my lesbian friends was dating a woman, not unusual. And that woman came to our friend group one day introducing herself as Seth. Seth had been undergoing gender-affirming care. He wanted to reintroduce himself to us and ask that we use his new name and his new pronouns. I didn't understand. Gay, lesbian, bi, none of that was puzzling to me. I understood that, but changing your gender, this seemed wrong. I'm so ashamed of how I processed this information. The comments I made behind Seth's back, puzzling it over with other friends, being incredibly judgmental. As weeks went by, Seth did not become some totally new person from his former self. But he seemed more like himself. One of my favorite college memories includes Seth. I don't have the time to share, and it's not really appropriate. Make good choices, kids. But at the heart of this story is Seth, who knew how to charm a whole room full of longshoremen, challenging their own preconceived ideas about gender and and identity, while being incredibly funny, kind, and brave. I owe Seth an apology for being close-minded, and I owe him a huge thank you for being his authentic self. He taught me a lot. I'd like to end by speaking to current students, especially trans and non-binary students in Prosser. The entire community is not against you. Some of us are here for you. You matter. Your feelings are valid. We hope you excel in this school district and have the same opportunities as your peers. We care about you. Most importantly, we want you here. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Next up is Noah Dempsey.
Good to start. Uh, I came here to speak today out of a place of disappointment and anger. Um, this comes as no surprise to me, given past events and um in the past nine months since I've graduated, um, I've been to more of these meetings than I've wished to have, um, since leaving my position as student representative. But I find it necessary to return when it seems that division and bigotry is the main focus rather than education. Um, the resolution tonight will pass, without a doubt. I have no doubt in my mind that it will pass because of a clear lack of understanding and respect for those who may be different than us. This resolution is in support of WIAA Amendment Seven and Eight. These amendments seek to bar transgender women from playing in sports that match their gender identity, sports leagues or divisions. Um, it has been reported by OSPI that nearly two hundred and fifty thousand students who compete in, that there are nearly two hundred and fifty thousand students who compete in school sports in the state. At most, ten of them are transgender women. That works out to point zero zero four percent. I believe this shows that this is a targeted attack on at most ten people and the community as a whole rather than simple supports for amendments. We're in this position today because it is easier to fear someone rather than it is to understand them. I relied, I I went back to this TED Talk that I seen in seventh grade, and it it still rings true to me today, and this kind of led me to what I was going to say today. Um, Daryl Davis was a black musician who interviewed Roger Kelly, who at the time was the Imperial Wizard of the Ku Klux Klan. He asked him the same question that I'm going to ask you today, although different contexts. How can you hate me if you don't even know me? I have spent too many hours of my time in the past bringing stats, data, and sources to these meetings, all for them to be ignored. Now I simply appeal to your humanity and to hope that deep down, members of this board find a basic amount of understanding and respect for those who may be different than ourselves. And to understand that what is happening here today is unfair, targeted, and unjust in every sense of the word. Thank you.
You know? Uh, next up is Chelsea Demas. Does that have that right? Chelsea, oh. Hello?
Hi, everyone. My name is Chelsea Demas. I am not a resident of Prosser. I am a resident of Sunnyside, Washington, specifically the Akma Valley. And I am here in both my personal capacity and as Human Rights Commissioner with the Washington State Human Rights Commission. To this Prosser School Board, as community members, educators, parents, and students, we must come together to ensure that every student, regardless of their gender identity or expression, is treated with dignity, respect, and equality. It is deeply concerning that some members of our school board are pushing for a policy that seeks to discriminate against our transgender students, especially when our school district's own statement makes clear that we do not discriminate but based on gender identity or expression. The proposed anti-trans policy is not just an issue of personal belief. It is an issue of human rights and fairness. We cannot allow policies that intentionally harm or exclude any group of students from fully participating in the school experience, whether in classrooms, extracurricular activities, or athletics. This policy targets transgender students, denying them the same opportunities, respect, and protections that all other students enjoy. It sends a dangerous message that certain students are less worthy of inclusion simply because of their identity. Our state, Washington, has been, long been a leader in promoting equi- equality and fairness. The Washington Interschool Athletic Association has had an inclusive, nondiscriminate or discriminatory policy for over a decade. Unfortunately, it is now being up for consideration. This policy has worked without incident, upholding the dignity of all students while following state anti-discrimination laws. In fact, Washington State only has four anti-LGBT bills under consideration, and it is telling that the ones we face are still rooted in discrimination. The proposed anti-trans policy is an attempt to roll back these protections in the name of personal beliefs that do not reflect the core values of our community, nor our educational system. We must stand up for the principle that schools exist to support all students, not just some. This policy would undermine the safety, wellbo- well-being, and inclusion of transgender students, and it would set a dangerous precedent for how we treat our most vulnerable. Furthermore, it is crucial that Prosser School Board reconsider this harmful policy to avoid further damage and litigation, which will only result in unnecessary costs, not only for the district, but for other school boards that choose to adopt similar discriminatory measures. The financial and social consequences of defending such a policy would burden the community, diverting resources from the valuable work of supporting and educating our students. It is critical that we remember our collective responsibility to protect every student, regardless of their gender identity. No student should be made to feel like they do not belong in schools or on sports teams. As a community, we must ensure that our schools are safe spaces where students of all backgrounds, identities, and orientations.
Can you wrap up, please?
We call on the school board to stand on the right side of history. We must protect all of our students, each and every one of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Alice Means? Elise?
Elise Means, Prosser, Washington. I have my address and phone number here. Um, Jessica described an instance in our region in which a transgender athlete won. I am curious if anyone on this board can cite a specific instance in which a transgender student physically harmed another student during competition in Washington State. I'm curious about that, and um that's all.
Great. Thank you, Elise. Blake, is there anybody online that would wish to speak? Okay, we will conclude that portion of the meeting. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. Moving on to Student Representative Reports. Shimi?
Oh my gosh. So for ASB, um, we're going to be reviewing court requirements. Um, for band, we went to the Sundome for all games except for one on Wednesday, uh, just to avoid missing too much school. Um, and then we have the elementary tour next week, um, Tuesday of the week. And then for miscellaneous, the tennis courts are really nice to play on. It's fun not thinking you're going to roll your ankle, you know? Um, possible, oh, I had um a teacher talking about how at their last district, they all, they had all teachers on the same type of like website, so like Canvas or like OneNote, like one of those, um, instead of being on various different um, websites. So just to keep it neat for students, especially in high school, uh, would, which would be nice. And thank you to a few people who commented tonight.
Thank you. Kami?
I just want to say congrats to our boys and girls basketball team for placing at state. Boys placed second, and girls placed fifth.
Thank you. Alexander?
Uh, Thursday, no, not Thursday. Last Wednesday, I met with uh uh, I met with Darlene and we uh talked about uh more ways to try to reach out to the students. Uh, we discussed that during her event during lunch. It's next week or sometime, I forgot. Uh, that uh will have uh people going around with a form in person to try to get more people to respond to that, since what we think is our problem is uh that just students don't take the time to reach out. Just recently, I was told about how a student didn't like one of our foods, but just didn't want to go up and say that they didn't like it. So during our meeting, I made sure to bring that up to Darlene. But yeah, that's about it.
Thanks, Alexander. Appreciate it. Any questions? Uh, next up is Discussion Items, School Building Reports. Kevin Gilman, Witstran.
Alright, here we go. Three minutes, right? Okay, it's our start. Um, we finished WETA testing this week. That's a big accomplishment. Uh, we have McTeachers Night, March twenty-fifth, from four thirty to seven fifteen. Um, we get fifteen percent of the sales during that time, so it's, last year we did it as well. It's a good fundraiser for us. Today, we had our O- OSMI Science Assembly, Reacto Blast. It's sponsored by the PTO. I want to thank the PTO for that, a second science event. Um, very popular. Kids enjoyed it. We have Traveling Lantern coming tomorrow, um, and they're performing Peter Pan. We have a PUD presentation in March twenty-fifth. They do a little electric show and talk about uh uh safety around electricity. Uh, we started attendance, March Madness, I think at every building um this month. We started a reading challenge, which will have weekly and monthly recognition for classrooms and grade levels. Uh, fifth grade will do their high school band tryouts next week. And we had uh individuals for archery qualified, um, for Bullseye. Easton, he got ninth. Uh, for the three D, we had Aiden, who had tenth, got tenth, and then Easton also got ninth in that. And we also had a team qualify for the three D event, uh, Nationals. They're still working on, um, whether you need eight players. So Wendy's working with those parents to see if we can get eight, um, families to commit to that. And that's my report.
Great, thank you, Kevin. Any questions for Kevin? Thank you. Alright, next up is Sean Cook, Technology.
Kevin just talked really fast. I know. That's okay. I'm going to talk fast, too. Uh, I have four things uh that I wanted to talk about tonight, all really great news for us. Uh, I wanted to start with the fact that, well, not necessarily the fact, with uh, over the, over the course of the last several years, we've kind of been behind in staffing. And uh, when we were behind in staffing, some things not got neglected. Uh, I've been able to come up for some air lately, and with that, I was able to spend some time updating our wireless network. Uh, that was really exciting. Our wireless network functions. It functions well. Uh, but because I haven't had the time to update it, I haven't had the time to keep it going, uh, it didn't allow for expansion. So I was able to update it last week, which has allowed us to do uh a couple of really neat things during NHD. On Saturday, we were able to have an open guest network, which was nice. We haven't been able to do that. So think, when you go, when you check into your hotel, you're able to like self-register for your wifi. We can now do that, and we can turn that off and on as we need to. Plus, more exciting uh than that is Art Fiker now has wireless, so uh, that's really great news to Ms. Rada, because now she can do her track meets and use that as her classroom, uh, something that she's been trying to do for the last couple of years, and I just haven't been able to give it to her. She now has that, so that's item number one. Uh, item number two, uh, the last board meeting that I was at, you guys passed a couple uh different um contracts for me. One was the setting up of our new Spam Titan. That is now fully functional. I've spent the last couple of weeks getting that going. Uh, that too, just like wireless, when we update things, we get new and better functionality, so I'm super excited about a couple of new features with our new Spam Titan. Uh, perhaps you've seen the emails go around that say, do you have time or are you available? And they uh particularly target our administration, our principals. They uh do what's called name spoofing. Uh, our new um our new appliance or our new solution now allows us to protect against that. So it's not foolproof, but it's way better than we had, so that's great. Uh, the third thing is our new uh Communication Archive appliance. We uh, I have that in place. We are currently migrating over from our old appliance to our new appliance. That should be completely done this week, so I'm excited. That'll be put to bed, too. And then my fourth thing is just we're getting ready for the next school year, which sounds really weird because we're still in March of this year, but uh, on the data realm side of our department, we've been getting things ready so parents can register for next year, and that's really exciting, so. I didn't talk as fast as Kevin, but those are my four things.
Great, thank you, Sean. Any questions? Appreciate it. Next up is the District SBA and iReady data.
So Deanna and I are going to tag team. Last meeting was a long one, and we spent a lot of time talking about data. And we talked as an admin team and thought that we should summarize it. So each of you have in front of us, to those listening, we can certainly get this out to you, but it was that little bitty bomb that you can't see on the screen anyhow. Um, so we put it in front of you tonight. Um, and so you can see the different schools in iReady Math, iReady Reading, Typical Growth, Stretch Growth, and then Smarter Balance Assessments. And Deanna can expand a little bit, but it's really just self-explanatory on there, but we thought it would be good for you to see the district as a whole.
Yeah, the one at the top also is our ARC data for our reading and K-Aid that just shows the overall number of students from the beginning of the year until now that um were emergency at risk and um are proficient, now showing that they're proficient. But it was, there was a lot of stuff thrown at you, so we thought just that one pager might help you see it a little bit easier.
And so when you take a look at that, that allows you to look at the buildings as a, as a whole, I mean, yes, buildings as a whole versus the district. And I do think it's important to remember um, the green number versus the red number doesn't mean that the red students did not grow. I think that's really, really important. Um, my son, who's now thirty-five, he would laugh if I was talking about him tonight, but there was a point in his life where he did not want to read, and all of a sudden, one day, he started to read in about fourth grade. And it wasn't because he couldn't. It was some other pieces, like, why read? I know how to read, that kind of thing. But that's what we're talking about here. Sometimes people just need to grow, mature, or do whatever. And we're welcome to any questions.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Kim or Deanna?
Um, when I did meet with the, well, I haven't met with everybody yet, but I met with most of the principals this month, and I want you to know, this is one of the things we've talked since I've taken this position is we're starting to spend a lot of time talking about instruction and data versus all operational.
Thank you. Uh, next up is Review Policy one-one-one-six-F, Student Reps to the Board of Directors.
So I'm going to kind of look at, you know, Shimi and Kami and Alex. So I'm gonna kind of look at Yosimi and Kami and Alexander on this. Um, if you can remember when we updated the application, we, for example, previous one said, circle. The year you are. Well, some circled the year they were gonna be, and some circled the year they are, so you'll notice we now have graduation year on there, so that. We don't have to guess what grade in school they are. Um, there were some suggestions as you go down a little bit towards the bottom about extracurricular activities. And then there was some stuff about attendance. So. Um, it's not necessarily something that has to come through for approval, but I wanted you to know the work that your student board reps have done to make this more effective for this year.
Great, thank you. Um, any questions, any comments you'd like to make on it, since you guys were.
It looks good. I think the graduation year was the most predominant change.
Cause our goal really is to not always have three seniors, right? The goal would be to have. At least one eleventh grader, if not two, so they're learning the ropes, they've been to the things, and then they can teach and grow as they.
Anything else you wanna add? Thank you.
And that you're all three seniors. What's your plan for making sure the next set of student board reps? Fill your shoes.
I've uh talked to a couple of students that I feel would um. Represent a part of process that doesn't necessarily get represented uh represented that well. Uh, and hopefully they're not afraid to be outspoken.
That kind of same thing, I've talked to my leadership class, who I think would be all great for this role, so I'm trying to get the word out there.
Ditto.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Alright, thanks. Uh, moving on to Review Policy and Procedure sixty-seven oh-two Wellness.
Uh, so the policy is one that Laura, for me, I think initially, uh Laura's one of our district nurses. And this policy really is about our health and wellness, our nutrition program, all the things that go into. Um, helping our students be most prepared to learn and to be successful. So they can talk a little bit about it, is I know a passion project of Laura's, so she might wanna talk a little bit. But just make sure you bring it close enough when you talk, so and slide it back and forth if you both talk.
So this is a passion project for me, um, when it, I know, and then I start tapping my feet. Um, getting, getting the. The word out to not only the students but to our community, that starting from the ground up, we can be healthier, we can be healthier as a community. Um, and it takes a village to do that, and so um. I'm on the Wellness Committee where we meet once a month. Um, Darlene helped draft this uh wellness policy that's, that you have in front of you. Um, Darlene and I met and uh went through several different wellness policies, um, including WISDA, W S S D A. Um, and pulled from several, pulled from Atapanish Policy, uh Lopez Island Policy, um, another one, and then WISDA. And compiled this as a jump-off point, and Darlene was really instrumental in um. The finer points as far as the nutritional piece of it and what the USDA guidelines are, all those, right? Yeah, and O S P I, what the guidelines are, um, and she can speak more to that, but I think between the two of us. And as Darlene and I were speaking, you know, it's not like we have it all figured out, but this seems like a really good jumping off point. Some of it is um, is like, wow, are we biting off more than we can chew? Well, it's not that we're gonna get there today, but it's great to have a goal and keep our eye on the prize. So welcome your um, any questions?
I've got a few. Um, I don't know if this is. I don't know what page this would be, this would be actually, I mean, I like the policy, I think it's, it's good that we bring it forward, and I think it's important. Um, I just had some questions on the procedure side of it, um, which would be. Page two of the procedure under the Healthy Food and Beverage option, options. When it talks about like, um, I think it's the third, uh, no, it's the fourth bullet point down, the use of food that contains harm. Harmful residues of agriculture chemicals. Um, to me, that kind of reads. Basically organic, or trying to get to organic. Would it be better to put more language in that would? Oh, what would it, was my comment, like the certifications to sell to the public?
Yeah, I think that would be better.
And then I had a couple other questions on the vending machines, and I don't know if this will be popular for the. People that use them, but so how does that get managed if you start to? I guess what kind of foods would that be in vending machines and?
So with the vending machines, we have to go by the O S P I guidelines on.
Currently?
How they have to be healthy, they can only contain so much sugar, so much caffeine, and those have to be. Available for the students, but like if we were to sell Pepsi to the students, we could only sell Pepsi to the students. Thirty minutes after the school day was out. I have some um guidelines right here that I could pass out to everybody.
An example, that's why in school vending machines, you see baked potato chips and not traditional ways.
Or like G two instead of Gatorade.
Gotcha. I see, okay.
So it's sodium, sugar, caffeine, uh, those are the meat and fat, so that's like you went with baked chips versus.
So it's really not a change from what we're currently doing?
Not for vending machines.
That would, it looks, it also includes snack bars, is adding, would that be a concessions thing as well?
But that's after school, that thirty minutes after school. So that doesn't matter.
Okay.
Would you be able to share those guidelines with us in an email?
No, I didn't give them to you right now.
Well, I mean, I don't know if others wanna see them too, so.
She brought copies for everyone.
Oh, you did? Yeah, I would love a copy, thank you.
Uh, let's see, I have another one. Uh, Wellness Committee, which is part of the post. Do we have one of those, or is this something that? You're trying to work on and developing as a, as a group?
And that is a question with the um, with the committee that I'm on, our, our Farm to School Program. Uh, committee that I'm on right now, we've been talking about, is it? Important to differentiate the farm to school and a wellness committee. We don't wanna muddy the waters.
Right.
And so that definitely is something, um, but also with, within that, that being said. Uh, with a wellness committee having um, community representation, student representation. Um, educational representation, and we really do have that within our, our Farm to School Committee right now. So it, it's a discussion we need to have and probably bigger um, more in-depth.
I think, um, saying it a different way, we already have a group that's doing a lot of this work, and that's what brought forth. The Wellness um, first policy, right? And we're like, we need to have a discussion about that. And so do we rename the Farm to School Committee, or do we put the words Farm to School Committee inside our Wellness Policy? And that's what I think we're talking about, muddying the water. Do we need another committee just because, so could we change the name in the? Policy to the Farm to School Committee instead of, and be, or Wellness Committee parentheses Farm to School, or something like that.
Or maybe something that's more of a generic term, and it wouldn't really matter what we call it. That's usually easier than putting in a name. Real specific on something. It's your farm to school. Yeah.
That's all I had, thank you.
I appreciate that you elevated this, um, and that you're passionate about it. I think it is wellness as a whole, not just in food and nutrition, right? But in exercise and um, you know, community involvement, all those aspects. Good people, good, well-rounded people, I think it's really important that we bring that up to the forefront. So thank you for putting in the work and.
Thank you for acknowledging that. I agree with you.
Yeah, and I'd like to thank you too, because I just finished like my Nutrition one-on-one class for my AA at C B C, cuz I'm a Ring Star student. And like, nutrition is so undertow in the US, so thank you so much for preparing us.
Quick question for you, um, on the physical activity, it says all students will participate um in physical education classes. Um, what, what's the plan? Obviously, K through five, that's an easy one. But it seems like once we get middle school, high school kids, we're either trying to get out of PE class or, you know.
Yeah, so there, there is state, there's law around that that we're required to follow, so we may have to. Do some work, work on that wording as well to make sure that it would match what the law requires.
I actually did a cross-reference with that twenty-four oh-seven, and they play nice in sandbox.
So I, it's funny that you bring that up, so I have a professional peer who's superintendent. Um, I'm Amy Pratt out of Vashon Island, and they're working on their wellness part, and she just sent a text this morning. How many minutes of PE do your children have, K through twelfth grade, right? Well, I, let me back up, K through eighth grade, because PE is regulated for a minimum at the high school credits, right? And so, and she goes, boy, you guys have a lot of PE, and they're in Vashon Island, so it's supposed to be a healthy place to live, so. We have more PE for our students than most.
Great, any other questions?
Oh, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks for putting this together, good work. Hey, moving on to Review Policy Procedure thirty-two forty-one, Student Discipline.
So um, this is the second time, and it may even stay on here again. Um, the last week, our last meeting, I just brought to you and said, here it is. Right? It wasn't, there wasn't a lot of discussion about it. Um, one of the things that we all need to remember is that procedures, right? Have to be, um, they're not actually adopted by the school board. They are, but they aren't, but the procedures have to go through the administrators. And everybody else has to have a part of that. We do need them, I think Laura said it very well when she said play nice in the sandbox, we have to make sure that our. Procedures don't contradict our policy, but the procedures, once you've kind of looked at the policy given us, then. The administrative team and so forth puts the procedures together, and then the procedures then are reviewed by you and everybody, but the administrators do that. Then we make sure they're in the student handbook, so it kind of goes hand in hand. I just wanna make sure everybody understands that. Policies are adopted by the board and procedures are reviewed. And I'm ready for any questions if you've got them.
Anyone have any questions? Okay, I'll go then.
Okay, I'm ready, or I hope I'm ready.
So under the very first page of the policy, uh, rights and responsibilities of the district. Um, it talks about uh trained guide service and service animal. Um, we have a current policy for that, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um, the next question.
I'm wondering, can we push, can we slow down a second? Do you think that policy number should go in that line?
I would probably reference it, you know, as part of that.
Okay, I just wanna make sure I'm, my brain and ears are tracking on the same, that's perfect, thank you.
Cause at least it'll lead them to, you know, the, the part on, on the service animal and guide document. Um, the very next one. Um, talks about depriving a student of constitutional rights, of freedom of speech, press, et cetera, et cetera. Do you think that's important, um, that we don't infringe on that at all? Um, but. How do we address that if it interrupts uh instruction?
I don't, guess I don't have an answer off the cuff. I mean, we don't allow it to interrupt instruction now, but I don't know how to answer it in the form of policy.
Would that be part of this in the, or is that a, a different policy?
I, I don't, like I said, I, I'm looking at my shoulder, Deanna, I don't know that it.
So when you, so, so of course, students still have their constitutional rights when they come to school.
Right.
Um, but there's also um, in law uh that you can't disrupt the learning environment. So if a student wants to have a peaceable assembly out at the flight pool in the morning before school, that's fine. Um, but they um, you know, can't stand up in class on the desk and protest and disrupt the learning.
Right.
So it's a balance, it really is. Um, and um, like the, it talks in here about um, not have, yeah. Being protected from unreasonable search and seizure, but. In a school district, if you suspect, if you have, you have a reasonable suspicion, a student might have something that they shouldn't have, whether that's a weapon. Whether that's, you know, legal substances, school districts have, have the right, employees have the right to search. So it's um, whereas just someone walking down the street, you might go, oh, I bet, I think that person. As the police can't just grab them and search them for no reason, so um, you frown upon that, right? Yes, so um, so it is a balance. I mean, we're still always trying to protect student rights, but at the same time, we're protecting student safety. And learning, right?
I had one last question under the procedure, um, it would be. Second page. Be the first bullet point on the second page. Um, it, it just references a judicial decree or order. Identifies a specific person or persons to act as a parent of the child or to make edu, you know, et cetera, et cetera. Um, how does a school district? So obtain that type of information and make sure we do the right thing?
So I'm gonna use myself, cuz I've been divorced for twenty-five years, and my kids are now adults. When my um, husband and I were divorced. Um, we have a divorce decree that identifies who makes educational decisions based on that. So in the Skyward system, thirty years ago, we had Family One, and then we have Family Two, and when you have two families, then there's a document that goes, that supports that. And um, then inside that, there can even be, um, when I moved to the Lower Valley. And the boys were still in Owensford part of the time, then I was able in our parenting um. Parenting plan, I was able to identify my parents that could pick them up in Owensford if it was time that I couldn't be there for my job in Granville. So it's all legal documentation that we track and keep that through, and that's very common.
Yeah, I mean, it would be the same.
Is that something that the?
You could have foster kids, and um, sometimes we've had foster kids where the, they're in foster care placement, but the foster care system is making decisions. Um, and can, you know, maybe in conjunction with the foster parents, sometimes not. Uh, it just depends on the situation, but. Um, and sometimes we have un, unaccompanied youth that have been left with. A grandma, a neighbor, um, and we don't have documentation. But that is where the child lives, and that's who's taking care of them, so uh, it's, it could be, it can be challenging, yeah.
Thank you.
So I'm going to ask for guidance, as I do sometimes. Since I've not heard a lot of discussion on this, are we ready to identify those couple of things, and are you ready to move this to first reading? And then if that is, um, then I will be asked, or I will be tasked with my administrative team to begin working on procedures. Does that make sense? So are we, am I being given the, the green light to move this to first reading? Okay, but I meant, you're, you're. Let, I'm gonna look to my right, is there anything else we need to clarify? So now we've got the green light to move, and we'll work with the procedures with the staff. Alright, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Alright, that concludes discussion, moving on to action items. Uh, the first action item is a consultant service agreement with C WAC Track twenty-twenty-five. Mr. Jackson.
Hey, everybody, how's it going? I am requesting um, the use of Tri-City's Thunder, which is our timing system that we use every year. Um, he's gonna be timing two of our meets. The first meet is our Rotary Invite, which is Saturday, April nineteenth. Uh, his charge is one thousand dollars, and then he'll also be timing our other meet, which is just a league meet. And that is Thursday, May eighth, and that's six hundred dollars. The reason why it's the four hundred dollar difference, because the invite. Is quite a long event, and there's about thirty to thirty-five teams there, and that's why he charges a little extra for that one. Um, we did get lucky, since we are hosting regionals this year as well, which is the C WAC, our league, as well as the GSL, which is the Greater Spokane League. Uh, we're not gonna have to. We're not going to have to pay that ourselves as a, as a school, because our league will cover that cost, so we're just going to have two action items for these ones, for this year.
Any questions for Jackson? I move to approve the consulting agreement with the CWAC Track 2025 and the consulting agreement for the Prosser Invite 2025.
I'd second it.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Jackson. Next up is out-of-state travel for the National Conference for Migrant Education.
Go ahead and stand if that's okay. Can you guys hear me? So, we're here before you today, we're requesting out-of-state travel. As you know, we've gone to this conference before the national conference, and we usually do that bi-annually. Really not a whole lot of new fascinating information every year that we need to attend. However, this is an op here for us, and the reason why we're coming before you today is we have been selected to do two workshops. One of them is with our students that you see in front of you, and all of our planetary work. Some of you have participated in those events. And our second workshop that we've been selected for is to showcase the work the rest of our team has done in regards to regional PLCs, not just within, you know, our own team, but all the other districts throughout the state. So that's really grown and developed into some amazing work and collaboration with other districts. But this is about them, so I wanted to let them go ahead and showcase and explain a little bit of their perspective.
Good evening, is it on, Charlie?
Yeah.
Good evening, thank you for this time to allow us to speak to you about our work. Over the past year, we have learned a lot using the planetarium, and now we can share what we have done with the country.
Your approval tonight will allow us the opportunity to continue to grow in our skills. On a large scale, we are hopeful that we are, can inspire other students in our district and region with the work that we have done over the past two years.
We are very proud to be part of this community and school. We are asking that you allow us to continue showcasing the Prosser School District on every level possible. Thank you for your continued support of the students here in Prosser.
I don't have any questions, these guys are doing a great job, it's a cool opportunity for you guys. If you get the opportunity, I would try some sourdough from the Bay Area. It's, it's just different.
Any other questions for...
Are you the three students who'll be attending? What are you looking forward to the most? I know it's not the bread, but probably bread and... Sorry, what was that?
Inspire different districts and the regions.
To be able to show off what we've been practicing for a long time.
To teach people more about the planetarium.
Are you taking the planetarium with you, which I can get out of the bag and...
Digitalis, the company that we purchased the planetarium from, is actually sponsoring the use of the demo planetarium, so they're actually at their cost, they're over $500, they're going to ship a demo planetarium over there for us.
Any other questions?
Sounds great.
One move to approve the out-of-state travel for the National Conference for Migrant Education Program. Then moved and seconded, students? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. Good luck, have fun, and maybe come back and tell us, tell us a little bit about it, so appreciate it. And next up is Prosser High School New Course Proposal, Basic Computer Skills.
So, we've, you know, brought new courses before the board before, and the high school has seen a need for a basic computer skills course. Most students that have come up through our system have basic computer skills, but we have students that are coming into our district, quite a few students from either out of, out of district, out of state, or even out of country, and they have a need for basic computer skills course. And so CTE is sponsoring this course and the cost of the course.
That'll be one trimester every, every year, right?
Well, it'll depend on enrollment, all of their courses depend on student interest and need, so if they were to have, they'll probably plan to put like one section in, probably, maybe, and see how it goes. If they had a huge demand for it, they could increase the number of sections. Mr. Blair Kason would be teaching it, and he, so, you know, he teaches other courses as well. So they'll probably start out with one, but I don't, I don't know, because they haven't done course requests yet, so we'll see if there's a whole bunch of requests for that, and then they'll make a decision whether they need more sections.
Is it something we should consider incorporating middle school or earlier, because of the basic level?
It could be an elective course, or could be a course in the middle school right now, I mean, Michael, Michael's not here today. Yeah, perhaps, it'd just be something, I mean, it would be something, there's a lot of things, personal finance, there's so many things that would be useful, but yeah, those, you know, we went through COVID where kids had to use their Chromebooks a lot, and then almost sort of a revolt, but some teachers, like, they didn't want to use them anymore, or kids are like, "Oh, I don't want to do this anymore." I know that, I've been working with the science teachers at the high school, and particularly with their underclassmen, freshmen, sometimes even sophomores, they get that computer fatigue from doing a lot on the computer, so like, they were piloting one of the curriculums, there was a lot of reading on the computer, and they really wanted print. So I think it's a balance, I mean, we all need those computer skills, because your, most jobs have some sort of that skill that's required, but we're going to try it out here, and we'll see. Yeah, we'll give it a shot, but we, there's always opportunities, we have a STEM teacher at the middle school as well, so maybe down the road.
Any other questions?
I was just curious what the student reps thought about it.
I think this is essential, I come from a very electronic-based family, but I know a lot of kids just don't, and like, my Spanish teacher was teaching how to bookmark a tab today, so I think that could save a lot of class time, just in random classes.
Thinking about my freshman year, I definitely could have used this class, so I think it'd be very useful coming into the high school and learning how to use our Chromebooks.
You don't have to say anything, Alex, if you don't want to. It's like they go down the line, he's like, "I want me to say something."
No, I feel like this, this should probably be taught in like, elementary to middle school, probably not like little, little elementary, but maybe like 4th grade, 5th grade and up. But I think it's always good to have at the high school, because maybe newer kids to the district could enroll in it.
I think too, it's hard sometimes for us to think, how do we fit another thing in? But maybe it's possible to look over the span of grades of our certain skills, like maybe bookmarking a page is something you learn when you're in 4th grade, so everybody learns to bookmark a page, and we still would maybe have to have a class like this for kids who would have missed that, because we of course have a lot of students that enroll, but those are all really good things to consider. Thank you, students.
Yeah, I think that was a great point, Alyssa, that, I mean, kids are on their Chromebooks full-time in elementary and middle, you know, bringing this just at the high school level is helpful for people who've missed it, but definitely basic computer skills are needed much earlier. It looks like there's 100, up to 100 licenses though covered, and only 28 potential people in the course, so...
That'd be in a section of 28, one section, that's what they're looking at, their max for students in one section. So they could have multiple sections, but...
You mean...
Me, oh, like, one class, 28 seats, must be how many computers he has.
So he could have one first period, and he could have one third period, which they're called different sections.
Yeah. A section is one period of the class, yeah. A section would be one period of the class, you could have two sections, you know, so they're, they're just kind of doing, I mean, really, if you multiply 28 times 3 or 4, you're not getting 100, but that's the idea that he's budgeted for.
So if the course request was high, they could do two or three sections, or even four, and limit them to 25 seats a class, that would be the 100 licenses.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Kim or Deanna?
I would move to approve the Prosser High School New Course Proposal, Basic Computer Skills.
Been moved and seconded to approve the Prosser High School New Course, Basic Computer Skills, students? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. Thank you. Next up is the Houson Middle School Chiller Replacement.
So at one point, we brought to you the actual chiller, and now this is the labor to do the installation, and I'm open to any questions, but that's what it is. This is, for those listening or, or reading along, this is using our capital levy dollars to do this work.
So the, this price was just for installation?
The $86,000, yes.
And then I was trying to find, like, on the scope of work, it seemed kind of vague on...
It is a little bit vague, basically, it's lifting it up, putting it on the roof, installing it, making it operational. It is a, I think the terminology is like and kind replacement, so the size and weight and whatever, it should be similar in its replacement stuff. And so then they will make sure it's up and operational. The goal, this sounds bad, but I'm living in the world of construction, if anybody else is, the goal is to get it on the roof, and the really noisy, icky stuff is done during spring break. That's what the contract is for. Then the operational piece may take longer than that one week, but the one week is to get it on, a noisy crane gone before work schools start the next Monday. Oh, and I learned, remember when you asked me about this contract and what the little lines were and all the things? So this is a standard contract, the little lines means that they've done changes in it to make it adjustable for our contract, that what we needed. So this is kind of like, if you use a template, and then they've made changes, and then at the end, where the change...
Any other questions for Kim?
I was just noticing in 16-3, the termination of owner for convenience, the last part of that, where it states that, that the cost incurred by the reason of such termination, along with reasonable overhead and profit on the work not executed. So I mean, it sounds like they're going to get paid either way, if they didn't do the job.
I think it means, may I read it just for a moment?
Sure.
The 16, so termination by the contractor is different than termination by us, and if we have cause, no, we're not paying. And then 16, you said three?
Well, yeah, just, yeah, the very last part.
For convenience, yes, if we just say, "Oh, you can leave it up there, or we're not going to finish the project," then yes, we're still responsible for the bill. Now, if we have cause, then that's not... And I think that's pretty standard in most contracts. If we have cause, there's no pay, if we just say, "Hey, we don't want to, we don't want to do this anymore," we still owe them the money.
But they just supposedly have the old EDA for us?
I'm going to be really honest and say, I don't know, but I, I will look at this real quick, but the answer is yes, because I think it, Mr. Denny here, I think it left on the truck.
Oh, nice. Also, the old one's already gone.
I think so, I, I think so. And I, I want to be very transparent, this is one I don't know the answer to, but I can let everybody know, but I'm relatively certain it left on the truck. I will text Mr. Denny while we're moving, unless you see another problem, but I will ask the question. Or you know who I'm going to ask is when a ha, Jake has his phone on, so I will ask them.
While you're working on that, I was trying to look for a clear language warranty, and I couldn't decipher half any of it. I can't, I think it's a nine something, nine, or no, 8.5 is the warranty, but it doesn't give us a timeframe, and it references Section 12.5, but it still doesn't give us a time, do we know what they're... Because they're just supplying the work, right, we've already purchased...
The equipment has the warranty on it.
But do they, but what, how long is the warranty on their work to be performed? And I can't find, I don't know if he saw it. I don't know if it's 30 days, a day, a year. What's that?
Day and night.
Right? Unless I don't understand the language, and it says it somewhere.
Do you want to, Tibble, to move it to the end, so I can work on this, so we don't have to keep going, and you can move on to something else, while I'm getting the answers to your questions?
Yeah, I think we'll move this, we're just going to move item five.
Okay, on the removal of the equipment, it's Apollo, that's removing equipment in charge for the disposal, I just got that one answered.
We'll move it to number 13.
Okay.
Let's say, according to, in addition to the contractor's other obligations, including warranties under the contract, the contractor shall, for a period of one year, offer substantial correction work, not performance requirements of the contract.
One year?
Same, you, I missed it somewhere.
Well, there was a long paragraph.
Thank you.
So when...
One year.
So I guess we don't have to move it unless you'd still like it, Tibble.
You guys want to move it to the end, or any more questions, comments, concerns? Well, then we're going to re-push it back to number five, and I'll move to approve the Houson Middle School Chiller Replacement.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded, student? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. Moving on to vouchers and payroll. Anybody have questions on that? Any questions on vouchers and payroll? One move to approve vouchers and payroll.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, students? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. Uh, moving on to. Resolution zero-three dash twenty-five WIAA for fair, safe and non-discriminatory practice in athletic and extracurricular activities. And I, I'd like to clarify just a little bit. This isn't a policy. Um, our policies haven't changed. Um, this is just a, in support of the. Delegates to the WIAA to vote yes on amendment seven and eight. Any questions? On that?
Um, I don't have a question per se, but first of all, I would love to thank everyone who came out tonight to speak. Um, I appreciate hearing. All of your perspectives, um, both for and against the amendments. I encourage you to reach out to your legislative representatives as they are the ones who make the laws in our state. Speaking of laws, I was quite surprised to see this resolution on our board packet tonight. Um, especially after Tom Water. Passed a similar resolution. And I will read to you what. The reply was from OSPI's Equity and Civil Rights Office. I won't read the whole thing, but for the public to hear this. They stated that the Equity and Civil Rights Office is responsible for ensuring. School districts in Washington comply with state and federal nondiscrimination laws, rules and guidelines. Including chapters twenty-eight A six forty, twenty-eight A six forty-two of the Revised Code of Washington, RCW. And three ninety-two, one ninety of the Washington Administrative Code. These laws prohibit Washington K through twelve public schools from engaging in discrimination on the basis of gender identity and gender expression. They noted that the Tom Water Resolution, very similar to ours, does not align. With the nondiscrimination requirements of chapter twenty-eight A six forty-two RCW. And may expose students to discrimination on the basis of gender identity or gender expression. Resolution. Is not consistent with the state's civil rights guidelines prohibiting discrimination in Washington public schools. Which state that school district should allow students the opportunity to participate in athletic activities. In a manner that is consistent with their gender identity. This resolution violates state nondiscrimination law. As a school board director, we all took an oath to support the laws of the state of Washington. And impartially perform our duties according to the law. So I completely understand that your personal feelings may differ from Washington state law. But I feel that we are all compelled as board members to support the law of the state of Washington and oppose this resolution.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Um, I'll start by, this is obviously my, my opinion. This doesn't replug the rest of the. Prosser School Board or Prosser School District. Um, with that being said, at, at no time. Should this ever be an issue about hating an individual, um, by any means. That, that's, for, for me, that, that's not what it is. Um, I believe the way this is written up from WIAA. Um, not saying that people can no longer participate. Um, there will be, uh, male, female and another category. You're, you're not it. You're not kicking anybody out from the ability to participate in sports. That, that's not what this says. I personally, I, I feel this is first and foremost about safety. And an equal level playing field. Uh, we talk about inclusive equity and fairness. Males playing in female sports, that's not fairness. In my opinion, that, that is not equitable. I, I'm sorry, I, I cannot. Cannot support that. Um, as far as any females in the state of Washington being hurt in a sporting activity. Physically, I don't know. Mentally, I will say yes. So in, in, in my opinion, th- this kind of gets us back to where, where the sports fields need to be. Yeah, I think we have to protect biological females in this and, um, I am in support of. At least giving, giving our vote or trying to, to, to bring in some. Some common sense in this and, um, hopefully the WIA will. Will, um, you know, protect biological females.
So I think Jason's point at the beginning is important. This doesn't change a Prosser School District policy. It doesn't change the state law. The state law says transgender is a protected class. So whatever happens tonight, tomorrow, transgender student must participate in sport, Prosser School District in our league. On our property, that's the law. They get to participate. It doesn't change that. Uh, just like we as board members get briefings with Ken on issues, we get updates from legal before we vote on certain things. I would imagine the WIAA governors are getting updates from their council as well. And I would imagine the legality of this proposed amendments are being discussed with them because it would violate. The state law and I think we had speaker talk about the financial impact of that and what would happen. We did take an oath as board of directors to follow the law of the state of Washington. Um, so it's a resolution, um, it's before us. Not every district's voting on it. It was brought in front of our board to vote on it. I don't think the WIA solicited, I'm not clear on that. Um, so has no legal impact. Uh, we also discuss a lot, we're reviewing policies for our district, what the procedure is that matches that. And there's no procedure with these proposed amendments as to how they're being enforced. And look at, I'll read the language from. Proposed amendment number seven, and it's number two under the con. Privacy should be fully protected. Any appeal process could be complicated and may involve. Medical evaluations that raise privacy and ethical concern. Schools and athletic organizations may face challenges implementing and enforcing the policy. Especially regarding medical assessment or appeal. Leading to administrative burdens and potential inconsistencies in implementation. Cause there isn't a procedure in front of us. Regarding how that would be implemented, I can imagine various scenarios where it's weaponized. And it doesn't say how a biological female would have to prove. You know, their sexuality, male or female, whether that's, you know, a standard physical as it is now, whether it's a more intrusive examination. Um, and that information isn't there. So I find that to be intrusive. I find it to be sexist. So that only applies to women and not in having to prove their biology in participating in sport. But most importantly, it violates the state law and we can't violate the law. We don't get to choose what law we pick. The law changes, it's a different conversation, but we have to follow the law.
Thank you, Lisa.
Just one more comment about amendment number seven that I found to be interesting and I don't expect anyone to have the answer to this. Um, but it does state. Brian, as you mentioned, it's not limiting anyone from participating in a sport. But it does state all student athletes, regardless of sex, gender identity or gender expression. Are allowed to participate in the boys slash open category. However, participation in the girls category is limited to students whose biological sex is female. I'm, I'm curious, you know, we've had a number of female students over the years express interest in participating in football. Um, I wonder if this open category then applies to females who wish to play on our football team. I don't know if anyone knows the answer to that, but it would read that way to me. Aside from the resolution, I just thought that was interesting.
No, great. I appreciate those comments. Um, you know, like Elisa said, this isn't, uh, you know, this isn't a policy change. This isn't. You know, we're not, all we are is supporting an amendment through the WIAA. Um, like, like Elisa said, nothing changes tonight or tomorrow. Um, but I, I did do some, a little bit of checking and, and I kind of went through. And, and there are biological differences between male and female and how they perform in sports. Um, I went through the WIAA state track, um. Well, state records, uh, for the boys hundred. Uh, they're at ten, ten point three five, the girls hundred, they're at eleven fifty-five. And I'm sure each one of those individuals worked tremendously hard to achieve that record. Uh, if I move to the discus, uh, boys is two hundred and three feet, seven inches. Girls is a hundred and seventy-three foot, one inch. It's a significant difference. And like I said, each one of them probably works just as hard to achieve that goal. Just like all our athletes do, work very hard to get to where they're at, whatever sport they're playing. When I look at, uh, uh, researched some tennis serves, uh, men's on their first serve is a hundred and seventeen miles an hour. For women's, it's ninety-nine. Doesn't seem like a lot, but you know, eighteen miles an hour when it's coming up, that is, is significant. The second serve, uh, men's is ninety-six, women's is eighty-four. Uh, when I look at, and the one that really kind of opened my eyes a lot considerably more was weightlifting competitions. You take a hundred and fifty pound man, his squat record is five hundred and twenty pounds. Take a hundred and fifty-eight pound woman, the, the record's four hundred and twenty-one pounds. So there is a biological difference. Um, and, and we want to make sure that. You know, our female athletes have an appropriate place to compete and be safe. So I think that's a part of this, whether it goes through or not. You know, it, it's out of our hands. It goes to the, you know, our delegate through the WIAA. Um, but those are the things that, that I'm concerned with the most. And, you know, in no way should we, you know, uh, disparage anybody. You know, that, that's not the point of this. The point is fair. Um, and safe competition, so.
I appreciate the comment. I think one point that's important to remember, we have WIA refs, I believe our area rep is. And I don't know if he's open to taking comments. I don't know if he's actually our rep, um, and there's, that's changed. And then also, of course, um, and so the WIA voting is over a few days, beginning in April. And it takes a sixty percent majority to amend their policy.
Right.
Um, and then also, if you are concerned about changing the state law, we can't do that here.
Right.
Prosser School Board. Uh, so co- contact your state legislature. They, or your lobby is not there.
Thank you. Any other comments, students? Questions?
Our district five rep is Russ Barman.
Thank you.
So, and thank you to Michelle and Elisa coming here so educated.
Any other comments?
I do appreciate your bringing kind of some statistics on who holds the records in various activities. I. Just want to circle back to Elisa's comment, um. There is a difference and we need to really remember there is a difference between winning and safety. Right? So just because boys might have better records doesn't necessarily mean that the girls they're competing against are less safe. They might have their feelings hurt, right? But I can tell you, my tiny little short daughter has a biological disadvantage in many sports. And I, against other biological females, right? I mean, that's just how God made her. She can compete in something else that's advantageous to a little short girl. She wants to be a winner or find her own talents, right? Um, we can't all be winners all the time, but let's not mix. Winning with safety. I don't want to confuse those two.
Well, I'd make a motion to approve resolution zero-three dash twenty-five WIAA. For a fair, safe and non-discriminatory practice in athletic and extracurricular activities.
I would just ask for.
I think we need to consider what Michelle said very heavily. Um, and I think we need to, as, um, someone who's going into politics. I think you need to realize the funding implications. This would very negatively affect your students that you are supposed to be taking care of.
Yoshi, can I put you on the spot and you can say, um, no, if you don't want to comment, but I'm just curious as a female wrestler, what your perspective is?
I don't think, um, I don't think a male would intentionally put the, intentionally put themselves in a position. Where they're wrestling females if they genuinely don't feel like a female. I don't think somebody's gonna go out there and fake it just to make first place at state. And I think people need to realize that these are children. These are children. You should not be discrimi- discriminating against children. Like, that's, that's not okay, just in general.
Students want to comment?
I feel like, uh, if state law and OSPI says that. The resolution's a bad idea, then I think it's just a bad idea. If they were to change their mind, then I would change my mind.
Thank you, Alex. And Kim, anything? We have a motion to approve. You have a second? It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution zero-three dash twenty-five. And this is a roll call vote because it's a resolution. So, Michelle?
Nay.
Brian? Brian?
Yes.
Lisa?
Nay.
And I will vote yes. The motion, resolution carries. Um, moving on to first reading of policy and procedure thirty-four twenty-five, act anaphylaxis prevention in response.
So this is first reading. I will say the two yellow parts should be removed. We do, are going to stop, stop, um. Anaphylaxis prevention medications, um. And we will have designated locations in all of the buildings, um, but that would be one correction that needs to happen before the final reading.
Questions for Deanna?
Laura's here as well. If you have any questions for the nurses.
I, I think it's good to have an anaphylactic prevention in response policy.
Laura, can you answer this question? Cause I was wondering. If a student has a prescri- has a prescription, you know how, um, now if a student has, uh, uh, an EpiPen. And they do not have it at school when school starts, they can't come to school. But if we have them in stock and they happen to not have it the first day, can they stay at school? Okay, we'll have to talk about that. Yeah, I think it could be too, but that, that's a question that's come up and so we'll have to talk about that.
Would that be something that needs to be added to the policy?
No, I don't think so. I mean, right now, our, our, um, our stand, our procedure is. If student has a life-threatening condition, they have to have their medication at school to attend school. Um, it's a, it's a, can be a battle for sure every year. Um, but if we can't ensure their safety, if they don't have that, then we have to. We do have to, um. We do have to, um, they have to stay home until they do. So our nurses do a great job of reminding parents three hundred and seventy-five times, starting in the spring, all the way up to school starting. And we still get to school time and it's can be a challenge, but most parents are really good about getting it done. We take in piles of medications the few days before school starts, but. Yeah, it is. Yep. Yeah, cause it's not, it's not just bringing your medicine. Yeah, cause it's not, it's not just bringing your medicine to school. If you've ever had a child in that situation, you have to go to the doctor, you have to have your care plan, you have to have all those things. Uh, there's documentation that's been filed, so it's not as simple as just bringing your medicine to school, you have to go to the doctor every year and get that renewed and. So it is, it's a, it's, it's, the ladies do a lot of legwork to make sure all that's in place and students are safe.
I move to approve the first reading of policy and procedure thirty-four twenty-five. It's been moved and seconded, students. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Vienna. Uh, next up is the first reading of policy and procedure twenty-four ten, the graduation requirement.
So this is a updated, definitely formatting and everything has changed a lot, this is a new model policy. Um, we went through several years, as I told you before, where there was different graduation requirements for like. We had kids, we had three different requirements at one point with kids just in the high school. Um, because of different requirements from the state, and there was COVID and, uh, so this has been really nice that we don't have to have like. Oh, from two thousand eighteen and before, and from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-one. So it is cleaned, uh, has cleaned it up considerably, and re- remember we are, this also, um, we are making adjustment. We have historically required three and a half credits of social studies and history, and we are going to follow the state requirement of. Three credits of social studies and history. It does, um. Yeah, it doesn't, it was not reducing our graduation requirement at twenty-six credits, but it does uh help us with some staffing challenges that we're experiencing, so.
Questions? Students, you have any questions on this one? Move to approve first reading of policy and procedure twenty-four ten, graduation requirement.
I'd second it.
Moved and seconded to approve the first reading of policy and procedure twenty-four ten, students. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those same sign, motion carried. Uh, next up is the second reading of policy and procedure six-one-one-four, gifts and donations. Think there's anything?
There's really nothing, I don't know what I should say, no changes.
I'd make a motion to approve the second reading of the policy and procedure six-one-one-four, gifts or donations.
Been moved and seconded, uh, to approve the second, um, and final reading of policy and procedure six-one-one-four, gifts and donations. Students, you have any questions, comments? Yes, thumbs up, thumbs down? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those same sign, motion carrying. Uh, second reading on policy procedure thirty-two oh four, sex discrimination and sex-based harassment of students prohibited.
I am going to follow suit with Kim and say this is, we've seen this several times, it's a second reading, so if there's any questions.
Questions, comments? I move to approve the second reading of policy and procedure thirty-two oh four.
Second.
Students? Alright, it's been moved and seconded to, did I already say that once? It's been moved and saying to approve the second reading of policy and procedure thirty-two oh four, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those same sign, motion carrying. Uh, next up is the Lake City Consultant for Prosser High School Irrigation Control System Program.
So, you've heard me talk, and Andy has talked about, we have this really complex control system for irrigation system. And it was never really trained and done properly and the. Uh, if you think about your personal yard, you have zones, and you have so many sprinkler heads on your zones, well. Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say our conversations with Ed Champagne, the architect, and myself got really deep for a while. And finally Bryce, who works at Architects West, said, well, I know the guy who created that program. So this contract is with the guy who created the program, and he's going to come in. And he's, um, if you look in the agreement, he's going to do the first three lines and then option A. Um, and then we're gonna video, and we're gonna train, and then we're gonna go from there. So, um, what I'm referring to on the costs, we're doing one, two, and three. And we're doing, um, op- uh, number four, option A. It's what's in the book. Excuse me, I stand corrected. Option B, I gotta read my notes now, I just reread it, just one second, please. Goodness gracious. We are doing option B. Not the, not the six thousand additional dollars, we're doing the option B. I apologize, I apologize.
Is this over district-wide or one-site specific?
This is mainly the high school, tennis court, baseball, that property. Soft, softball, baseball, tennis. Football. Practice field, anything in the hill, anything that was done with that hill work of the new high school.
And this, and part of this adjustment is now we're able to get more uniform water across.
Yes, so if you think about, I'm gonna just use my house, I have little drips around the, close to my house where my plants are. And then I have my big sprinklers out, whatever. The way we were told initially was you could only do so much, and that that is not correct, and so now we're gonna be able to run, I'm gonna use my house. Two of my big sprinklers and six of my drips at one time, so that I can, don't have to do my twenty-seven drips all in one time. And then just one big sprinkler. There was a mathematical problem that said we were only gonna then be able to touch the way it was. We only touched the water every two or two and a half days, and Andy was having to come in and manually turn them on on other pieces. Because we didn't have the right programming in the system.
So is it more of the, uh, a controller issue?
It was not the controller itself, it was how it was programmed, and the lack of the training thereof. Yes, and we're gonna do a video of the training, so, you know. This gentleman is older than me, and so when people retire, right, we have an actual training and a way to continue on.
Well, I think what, what contributed to the degrading of the previous track, perfect example of. You know, you, if this is gonna include the football field, then you know, there was always water spraying out over the track and. Well, that just, you know, over time, cooling up and the sun beating on it with water and dry, wet, dry, just, yeah. To me, it seems like it would be a good investment.
Yes, and we are going to do a little bit of, you know how we put this, sprinklers underground at the Housel Middle School Football? Where we're going to actually revamp some of the stuff around the ends of the track. And around the high jump and so forth, so that we're not spraying on those and having to buy new pad systems every four years. So I'm gonna prepare everybody who's listening and watching. If you see some brown areas this spring and summer, or certain spots around the track, those are intentional. So that we're not ruining the track and doing whatever, while we're reworking the underground sprinkler systems and those things. So if you're at the grocery store and somebody says they're not watering around the track, you're correct, because we're not gonna water the track until we can get the proper sprinkler heads and system in.
Any other questions? Well, I move to approve the Lake City Consulting Agreement.
I'd second it.
Been moved and seconded, student? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those same sign, motion carries. That concludes our action items tonight, moving on to the consent items, one through three.
I'd make a motion to approve consent items one through three.
Second.
Just a comment, we have two teachers on there that have worked for us for over forty years, Mrs. Shin, you're in Mrs. Bray. So if you see them, you can congratulate them on their soon to be in retirement.
So, we've got a first and a second to appro- approve the consent items, students. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those same sign, motion carries. I hope they enjoy their retirement.
We're gonna have a new one and two on the seniority list next year.
We might have to do the new prize of who has the most seniority on the opening day.
Right. Uh, moving on to re- uh, reports, uh, Delise, you're up first.
Okay, so I have, uh, January's financials. Um, we've been talking very openly about, you know, our cash issues. Um, so it's not surprising that our fund balance is, is low, but it is trending upwards from the last few months, and especially from September. Um, if you look at our revenue and expenditures from the last three school years, December and January are both. Expenditures are down and revenue is up, um, and that is, um, with the three of us really putting a, a pause on spending. Restricting what people are buying, traveling, um, all, all of that good stuff, so I've, I've been doing my due diligence. Um, enrollment in January is a little bit down from December, um, so remember that from here on out, our apportionment monthly. Um, is true to our enrollment, um, so that will affect going forward. And yeah, other than that, we're, we're moving slowly towards getting back to a four point five percent fund balance. Um, and I'm confident by, at the end of the year, that our predicted ending fund balance will be greater than than what we budgeted for.
Thanks, Delise. Any questions?
I, I wanted to, you kind of like, Deanna's talked about our forty-year, forty-year employees. I want everybody to understand, um. That's a huge accomplishment in this, in the world in which we're living in education right now. And it is taking principals, directors, it's taking everybody to stop spending. That makes sense, and to our community who are entrusting their students and bringing students back to our district, you're helping to by increasing the revenue. So I just want everybody to understand, it really does take us all.
Thanks, Delise. Uh, Deanna?
Look, I've talked a lot tonight, so I'll be fast. Um, I just wanna say, in the last two weeks, we've had so many. Great events for students in the Prosser School District, from state to science to arts to plays. I, I mean, it just, the, the list just goes on, so it's been really wonderful. Um, we've been doing a lot of work with staffing and budget planning, and we're continuing to work on that. Um, Kevin and I are doing a lot of work together, and Kevin is starting to work with our district, um, leadership team. As we transition him into his new position, Kim may, maybe is talking about that too, I don't know. We're also starting some work on the Witstrand attendance area. Because we don't have enough students in the attendance area to keep maintaining the enrollment there, so we're looking at some options. That would uh, increase the enrollment, level things out, so we're not, um. Pushing students out to Witstrand that right now currently reside in River View's, um, attendance area. Don't know when we'll be where we're ready to implement that, but we're doing some numbers, Ami and her staff are helping me, helping with that. And then I've spent, I'm spending time pretty much every day supporting Aurelia Guterres, our new HR person. Um, she's doing a great job, and oh my gosh, so full of energy, um, and it was really great today having Kim back, um, to visit with staff. And see everyone, which is really fun, cause sometimes our people in those kind of positions don't get a chance to maybe say goodbye or see everybody. That's challenging, but, uh, lots of good things are happening. I know the money thing is always, it's gonna be hard, but I think we got doing some good stuff.
Deanna, any questions for Deanna?
Okay, normally I go pretty fast, not that we're, but we're under our two-hour limit, so I'm gonna talk for a couple minutes. Um, Deanna touched on it, but I think for the record, we really do need to talk about some of really amazing things that happened. We had third grade. Performing at the Princess Theater. I want you guys to know, that's a lot of kids, and almost, and I hate to use the word almost, but I think it was every. But almost every single performance was sold out. It's important for the record to understand, this is not, I was sitting, I had people sitting behind me, and I heard them talking, and. If you know me very well, I have kinda elephant ears, so I kinda interrupt, interrupted their conversation, and what they were talking about was. That their child would have never been at Princess Theater, they would have never had that experience, and now they're going to try out for Finding Nemo this summer. Um, and more important than that is, we have so many families that would have never gone to the Princess Theater. Had their children not performed there, so by supporting the arts through this partnership. We're sub- doing more for our community than just the third graders performing on stage. And I think when you hear me talk about school partnerships, whether I'm publicizing them or pushing them, this is what we're talking about. Um, us, even when money's tight, and it costs our district approximately five thousand dollars per group. To partner with that, if you think about the return on investment, I guess you might call it, if you're in the world of business, that's card all ROI. Return on investment, that's a really good return on investment. The state basketball, for those of you who don't know this already, I am a athletic freak, I will go to everything under the sun. And so, it really was an honor, and granted, it's kind of in our backyard. But boy, the red showed in high numbers in the, in the stadium, or in the sundome. But I think more importantly than that, court, uh, Kobe McClure did his two thousandth point, or scored his two thousandth point. That's not done very often in high school athletics, on, in any athletics, actually. But more importantly, did you see our players, boys or girls, lifting people up off the floor, doing whatever? Remember, that's what high school athletics is about, right? We're growing better citizens, we're growing stronger people, because as much as all of them may wanna play pro basketball someday. I don't know that there's too many out there that we're gonna see in the NBA in about six or seven years. Chamber of Commerce, I went to the monthly meeting last week, I'm still staying really active in that, National History Day. To the Smiths and to, I don't know, the sixty or seventy people that were there. Um, to see Royal City there with two, Royal School District there with two buses, and the buses are all over, and the kids, and the smiles and the laughter. Um, remember, we're about academics, and this is a good way that we can show to the community and the state that we are about academics. Um, F C C L A, I don't know if you're aware of it, but we have a middle school program and a high school program. And we have middle schoolers going to Nationals, you can figure out a way to pay to get them there, but that's a different point, but we have students doing. And that's about academic, right? Um, we have the high school play this weekend, I think it's Friday, Saturday, and Sunday night, or Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night, right? That's another example, I think we're gonna see larger drama programs, bigger things, when our third graders are doing things. And now we're gonna be able to see them, and they're gonna understand what that means. Um, contract negotiations, we've started with the Prosser Coaches Association, we're doing meeting two next Friday. We're starting some of our work with one of our groups, we're working on, oh. Deanna and I are working on next year's calendars and the twenty-six, twenty-seven, so we're hoping we'll be able to bring those calendars to you at the next meeting. Um, hey, Delise and Sean and everybody, watch this, I'm gonna do this, you're gonna get this. That's a little drum roll. We have been arguing with the State of Washington and the Audit Association since the day I started. About the F C C, Federal Communications Commission. About S R money, that when we used by Chromebooks and Wi-Fi hotspots. And if you remember, I started in July, and I had to come to this group in August or September and say we had an audit findings. If you, you wanna go back, you can listen, I had to share that. Then I got really frustrated, well, you've already given us an audit finding in the twenty-three year when I wasn't here, and then we got one last year. For the second year of that audit finding. Well, ladies and gentlemen, today, we received a letter from the federal government that said. Prosser School District, you were right, and so we are going to challenge the finding, we don't know that the finding will actually come off of our record. Yes, it does impact things like Dun and Bradstreet, our credit rating, how we communicate with the community, if somebody looks this up. Yes, it does impact things like Dun &amp; Brad Street, our credit rating, how we communicate with the community, if somebody looks this up on, uh, our levy, all of those kinds of things, it really, really does. So I'm wanting it to go on the record that we did use our money right, we did what we were supposed to and we did what the federal government tells us to, because the federal government is the one who gave us the money. So I just want everybody to go on the record, that was a big deal to me, because if you know me, when I'm wrong, I'm wrong and I admit it, but when I'm right, I'm gonna fight till the end until we get the letter. Um, this capital committee meeting started, we had our first one, we have our second one April seventeenth, what a great time to bring people from our community to work on taking care of our facilities and our assets for many, many years to come. If you're listening or you're gonna go back and listen to the recording, please, if you're interested, please join our capital committee, it's open to anyone. Fields, Friends of the Fields Meeting have started, uh, we had a little bit of going back and forth today, but the, um, liquid fertilizer or the, I don't know, weed and feed, thank you. It's going on in the next couple of days on our play fields, our, our sporting fields, um, playgrounds and things will follow up later. Capital Projects Update, we've heard about the chiller, we do have the RFQ open for Realtors, uh, we are really looking for someone to help us and become part of our team to sell some of our properties that we have already for sale. And the Altidus Courts, I know it wasn't really exciting, but if you look out there, there's posts in there to separate us, a low fence, the tennis from the pickleball. And pretty soon you're gonna see some major work going on out there, um, E cap for, um, play, uh, recess type things, they're gonna be using some other facilities, but it shouldn't take too long and will be having pickleball in Prosser. Um, the rest of it, leadership is continuing on, I do wanna make it for public record, I have registered for Women in Leadership and the, um, Wassa Annual Conference and I am going and I'm paying my way that way, so I don't want anybody to think that I'm, we're saying no to someone else, but the superintendent's going, what's good for one is good for all. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Kim, any questions for Kim?
You know, it was great, Deanna was there, um, it was Thursday night of state basketball, so I just wanted to know that there may not have had some of the people there that may have been there, otherwise, um, we wrote, we got started, we're smithing our mission and our goal and we're, so we were gonna just do once a quarter, which is still the goal, but we're gonna do a second meeting on April seventeenth to kind of finalize some of that and set out, what is the purpose of it? Um, we talked at some length at the meeting about you change a superintendent and so it's like you go back to ground zero and then you start again, well, we're trying to keep that type of stuff from happening. Oh, one question that was asked by some of the members, does that mean I'm the capital bond committee or am I the capital levy committee? No, that's not what this job is, this job is about being, um, a partner and looking at what's going on in our system, so we take good care of our facilities.
Any other questions? Okay, moving on to director reports, Michelle?
Deanna, you were right, that there is a lot of good things going on in our district, so I had to be really choosy with my list of things I wanted to mention and I was like, it's really hard, it was still pretty long. I was so thrilled, I wasn't able to go to Lion King, but I was really thrilled to see that we were doing that, I just have a really, really soft spot in my heart for a theater and I love it so much. Um, so I'm glad that we're able to offer that to our students. Um, speaking of theater, like you mentioned, Kim, um, PHS Theater, Shakespeare's Twelfth Night will open tomorrow night, seven o'clock and, um, also Friday and Saturday night. I also couldn't make it to the, um, MTO's OMSI event, it was last night, um, which I was really bummed about, cause I'm like really into science stuff and I thought that would be so cool. But I was at, um, the eighth grade student and parent night at the high school for incoming freshmen and I thought, um, they did an excellent job putting that on too, it was really informative. Dragged my son around, made him talk to all the different tables that were there, even though he just wanted to go home, but, um, he got to learn a lot about what the high school has to offer and I appreciated that that was put on for the parents. Spring conferences opened up today, so anyone who hasn't snagged their spot already, um, such a great opportunity to talk to your kids' teachers and figure out where, you know, what they need help in and how well they're doing in school. Um, I did go to the PHS Art Showcase, that was the day after our last board meeting, I thought that was really great. Got to see a performance from the band, the choir, the theater, a lot of good, great art exhibits on display in the common.
First ever performance of our mariachi.
Oh yeah, mariachi. Um, also was a judge at NHD Regional, so that was really cool to see, um, the projects I got to watch and then just all the excitement, enthusiasm of all the kids and the volunteers, of course. This is my first experience there and it was pretty incredible to meet everything that went into it, so definitely a lot of things go to the Smiths for, I mean, they, it's just a tremendous effort that they pulled together. FCC LA, so I was there at state championships last week and, um, that was also really cool, I, I only learned about FCC LA just this year, you know, I think we put a lot of attention on FFA, especially at the high school, but the FCC LA program is really, really quite impressive. Being there at state conference, seeing like over five hundred kids from around the state there to do their projects and just the growing leaders that that program spits out, um, it's really incredible. Like you mentioned, the, um, middle school did have a first place and a third place, moving on to Nationals, um, I'm sure they're gonna fundraise their way, so you don't have to worry about paying for that. And then, um, just also looking forward to having Friday off, a free unused snow days. Oh, and, uh, I just wanted to put a shout out to the, um, Mr. Danny at the middle school, I've appreciated getting my second monthly newsletter, so that is a great addition and very helpful for parents.
That's Michelle, Brian?
Uh, yeah, I wanna just, uh, congratulate Boys and Girls Basketball on, uh, another, another great year. And then, yeah, Dean and Kyla Smith, um, thank them for all that they've been doing for this National History Day and then obviously getting to host Regionals here in our community, uh, pretty, pretty cool to see those pictures were, were coolies, you know, we can appreciate that, um, and then, yeah, just thank, uh, classified staff. Thank you for all the work that you guys put in, um, and then Safety Committee Meeting tonight, I felt really good about that, um, I think we're, yeah, getting things rolling in the right direction, so thank you, Kim.
Thanks, Brian, Frank?
Uh, I was just really happy to see just the concern with wellness and nutrition, thank you guys for what you're doing. Um, just, I believe it's so important for kids, um, well, all of us for eating more fresh and whole foods and, and supporting our local farmers, I, I love that program, it's just, it's just awesome. And I hope we can do a lot more of it. And, you know, more processed and packaged foods, that concerns me. I think that's, that's, uh, we just, we need to get back to more whole foods and I think it'll make for a healthier community. Uh, love to see the community involvement with the sports and all the community events. Sure would love to see and hear from more of the parents here, of our, parents of our students here at our meetings. Um, I hear from them pretty regularly on, you know, just on an individual basis, but, uh, if they're out there hearing, listening, I'd, we'd sure love to hear your input.
Thanks, Ron, Lisa?
Well, I have a list of the great things too, so I'm not gonna try to be a pile on or of how great the things have been, um, I wanted to say, um, the Arts Night, after we approved the Mariachi Band the night before. The Arts Night was fabulous on every level, but the Mariachi's, like, stole the show far and away, they had a soloist who sang the choir, the high school choir was wonderful. But in the Mariachi, I mean, it was like a professional level performance, she was stunning. So just congratulations, they've only started since December and just put on such an incredible performance, all the exhibits were great. Last week, you know, being downtown, um, for the tournament, it was like a, it was like Mardi Gras, there was a parade every day, great, the buses were coming through town, everybody's waving out the windows of the bus, people in town were waving, it was, it was a lot of fun and just congratulations to everybody. Uh, thank you to Linda Hall who posts quarterly score reports on Facebook, so we know what's happening, I think that's wonderful, I appreciate that very much. I got to be a judge for the National History Day and in the training, um, the state history day coordinator reminded us and said, you know, we are going around and talking with these kids. They don't talk, a lot of these kids don't talk to kids every, you know, they're on their tech, they're not used to that, so every time there's an opportunity for public, like our kids going to San Francisco to talk about the planetarium or the FCC LA for National History Day, it's just another opportunity and I'll tie that into Lion King, this wasn't like just a performance of kids standing on a stage, there's like professional, there's costumes, there was makeup, there was a multi-tiered set, they had choreography and singing. Everybody at the theater, step in the concessions, that's taking your tickets, that's helping you find your seats, that's all volunteer, um, the people that do the sets, it's all volunteers, it's such a great partnership, like Kim said, um, wonderful, for, for those of us who've lived in the Pacific Northwest a long time, OMSI is referred to as OMSI, if you watch Portlandia, so thank you to the PTO for bringing OMSI to Prosser. And then also, who, all the volunteers, like Frank said, um, just making everything happen in this community these last few weeks for kids and all the time. And for the first time in Prosser tomorrow, there's a Boys and Girls Club, uh, Friends Breakfast, there's one in the Tri-City every year, all of the clubs, this one is exclusively for Prosser tomorrow in Prosser, right over here in our new club, part of our PC partnership. Wonderful to see so many good things happening and they're all at a high caliber, nobody but, great work there.
Thank you, Lisa. Just kinda wanna reiterate again that, you know, classified staff, and we appreciate all the hard work you put into, uh, to making a school day, uh, productive and, um, you know, so we appreciate all the, I appreciate all that hard work. You know, again, graduate, you know, congratulations to all the, the, uh, the winter athletes that made, you know, state or regional competitions, uh, the basketball teams, of course, you know, finished last week. But I also wanted to, um, I went to the first day of practice, you know, for softball, tennis, baseball. And it was, it was kinda surreal, cause we've never had that as a district, you know, where you have every, you know, all, all the teams, you know, tennis used to be way off over here and they were all together and you could just scan and there's just kids everywhere having fun and enjoying that, so I, I think it was a, I think it's a blessing that we're able to get the tennis courts and be able to put them in that spot, uh, it's a great facility, so.
I'm gonna add to that, just so you know, the count is three hundred and sixty-three students participating in spring sports this year. That's high school, I don't know what the number is for the middle school, cause it hasn't actually kicked in yet, so that's high school, three hundred and sixty-three of, what was the count? But anyhow, a lot, a high percentage.
Right. Uh, well, that concludes, uh, tonight's meeting, we have another regular board meeting, March twenty-sixth, right here in the district boardroom at six PM, this meeting's adjourned, thank you.